All right, it's 5:30 PM. I'd like to call Boarder tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 15th, 2025, here at the App Central Administration Building Boardroom. We have a roll call, please, Tammy.
How's it?
Here.
Amber Durango.
Here.
Jacqueline Brenner.
Here.
Mike Cornish.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Paul Crowe.
John Smith.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Please join me as I may face the flag for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrill Area Public School Board of Education meeting. The app expects the role that our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to deny our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation for everyone in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Next on our agenda would be the public comments to the board. Anyone filled out a pink sheet, they could speak. We do allocate up to 15 minutes at the beginning of each regular board meeting for that. Next, we would have Board of Education recognition. We do have some number to get through. I heard rumor of a new rule that was going to be implemented, that if you're being recognized, you have to spend the evening with us. That was Mr. Murray's rule, but no. In all seriousness, the board would like to start off tonight by recognizing a number of individuals, but we'll start with Levon Vandergiees for his donation to The Nest. Levon is a Merrill native, a Merrill High School graduate, and is currently a junior here in Milwaukee, pursuing a degree in mechanical engineering. Levon is also a local race car driver who was chosen as one of the seven national finalists to participate in the Kowicki Driver Development Program, which was founded in honor of the late NASCAR legend, Alan Kowicki. The KDDP finalists are judged not only on their track stats, but also on their philanthropy and volunteerism. Since Levon's race car number is 23, he identified 23 local organizations to raise money for, and The Nest was lucky enough to make the list. Levon had stickers made for the hood of his race car and invited local businesses and race fans to give $10 or more to get their name on the hood of his race car for each race on his schedule throughout the season. The local causes he championed include domestic violence, animal welfare, veterans, community service, fighting cancer, community enrichment, food insecurity, mental health awareness, and suicide prevention, and homelessness. He also raised money for several organizations supporting kids with basic needs, positive mentorship, and healthy activities. Incredibly, Levon ended up raising over $25,000 for local organizations, which is such a testament to the fact that many people doing a little can really accomplish great things. The Nest is a fund ran by our school social workers to provide necessities to students and families who are struggling. This was the largest of all of Levon's fundraisers last season, and he presented us with the check for $4,405. So we'd like to recognize this evening. The other rule we didn't use, we're going to take a picture, and then we're going to let you speak three to five minutes. If you would share a little something of your journey on what's quite the accomplishment that you've had of raising funds for all those organizations.
Yeah, we've been racing for quite a few years now. I started back when I was eight years old in Bandoleros, and it kind of grew into a pretty big thing with super late models and the Midwest Truck Series. And I had some big accomplishments, and I gained a lot of fans throughout the years and great supporters. And over the last two years through the Kowicki Driver Development Program, we decided to use the platform that we got through racing to start to help try to benefit our community and causes that we thought were important. So it was really cool to be able to support so many great organizations this year, and it was really an honor.
Thanks again, Levon. Next, this evening, the board would like to recognize the following teachers from Prizzle, Pine River School for Young Learners. Courtney Wodzinski, Anne Nowinski, Kayla Strayer, Tricia Wiley, and Stacy Molitor for their dedication and hard work. Their commitment to investing extra time in training and professional development has been invaluable. Additionally, their efforts in building strong connections with families and providing ongoing support have made a meaningful impact on our community. Thank you for going above and beyond to ensure the success of every child and family.
All right, like I said, if not, we can as long as I can do that.
Or Stacy?
Yeah.
Work our way in front of this slightly, this way a little bit. All right, thanks again. Now, I'm going to do my best on this recognition because we're bundling a lot of things tied to the holidays, which includes a number of high school staff and students who've gone on above and beyond during the Christmas season to make sure everyone had a good Christmas, whether it was through the Adopt a Family program, the Old Cozy Night program, or celebrating with staff. Students go above and beyond to brighten the lives of others in the Christmas season. First, I'd like to call up students, and then we will have staff members speak on that. Tammy, if you could help me with that, if you could come up as I call your names and students. I'm not sure if he's on here, but we'll start with Chloe Forman, Jamison Risinger Kupinski, Kevin Greifey, Willie Kearns, Gange Kimmons, Zachary Mallard, Shannon O'Malley, Maris Laisse, Reyes, Damian Parker, John Schneider, Liam Walters, and Jamison Ward. Staff, I would like to, I will recognize you guys separately, but first, if Tricia Kubitschek could say a little bit about the students we're recognizing. So, Tricia?
How much time? Go ahead. I can be long, but I'll keep it short. These kids are amazing, and they deserve every ounce of recognition that they're getting right now. Around the holiday season, right, it's a great time to like give back. And in the school system, we have an opportunity to, of course, with the education cheese, but also connect with the community. So there's a couple of different organizations. One of them is called Old Cozy Night, and it is run by a local family that partners up with a few businesses, and they pack pajama, toothbrush, storybook kits for every 4K student in Merrill, including the program of students. This year, that was 200. And so this group followed the directions. We had an assembly line. It was like, book, toothbrush, pajama. And I maybe got a little bossy at times, but it was super helpful because that's a lot to do. And Amaris' little sister, right, was a recipient of one, so she thought that was kind of cool because she packed it, and that helped see the joy that I brought her. So thank you for that. And then the second thing that we do at school, which they were a part of in different ways, is we do like a holiday happiness thing, and we nominate different families, and we make sure that as many needs as we can meet just within the school, but also in the community, are met with making sure that people have like a brighter Christmas for whatever reason. And some of them help shop, they help make the bulbs, they hang on the trees, and certainly staff can't do that alone. And so I thank you guys very much. Mallard, did I anything you want to say about the experience?
Yeah, so it was very nice giving kids a Christmas that they might not have been able to receive in the first place, and just making every kid, you know, have something to wake up to is something that was not only important to me, but important to the program.
All right. And as I had mentioned, a number of high school staff members we'd also like to recognize. I mentioned Tricia Kubitschek, Reese Hope, Reece Kratz, Tony Moldenhauer, Grant Dolkey, Amy Radisson, Jason Wodzinski, if you would join me as well.
I was so excited, sorry. I was giving high fives, but they left.
that was like with the students, the holidays? I'll call on Grant otherwise.
I just think it's an amazing thing. I think it's an amazing thing that the kids participate in such a big thing that is a big part of Lincoln County. It's a great thing.
I think the coolest thing about this is that it's not necessarily like a financially need-based program. And so like, I had a student who lost an uncle, lost a stepfather, and like, I called them, and that mom was like in tears, like, thanks for thinking of my kid for this recognition. And the kid wanted goofy things, like wig glue and koala stickers, and I'm like, I got you. Like, we'll get those things for you because that's what's going to make you happy. So it was cool.
I would also like to add that another piece of this was, we took care of staff, right? So there were staff that also organized a really cool activity throughout the week for staff to make sure that they were in the holiday spirit and well taken care of, too. So that's another part of it. So thank you.
Wonderful, great job.
Thanks.
Hey, bail over, Grant, Tony, that was nice.
You kissed me a coffee.
All right, continuing on with recognition, we'd like to also recognize this evening, Kayla Williams for the incredible display she organized in Prairie River Middle School Cafeteria, the giant Christmas tree. Every student's contribution and staff pictures on top of such a beautiful representation of our "we are connected" mindset. Yet for Kayla, putting into ensuring all the students participated was amazing. Final result, not only visually stunning, but also a powerful reminder of the sense of community we're building. Big thank you to Kayla for her creativity, thoughtfulness, and dedication to making this happen. Kayla Williams. Thank you, much appreciated. What was your favorite part of putting that together?
It was the result of seeing everything put together because each kid had a smaller version of a tree that pieced together to put a larger tree. And then I had some really clutch seventh graders that helped with the elves on the top of the tree of all the staffs. It was a group effort all the way across for our whole community.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, last but certainly not least, the board would like to recognize tonight, Tiffany Boueager for her extraordinary effort in organizing five elementary holiday concerts in the month of December. Her hard work, creativity, and positive spirit brought the joy of music to our students, staff, families, and community during the holiday season. Her ability to coordinate so many unique performances showcasing the talent and hard work of more than 600 students is a testament, third amendment, and incredible teaching. Thank you for going above and beyond to share your passion for music with our schools and community. Thank you, Tiffany. There has to be so many rewarding moments with all the different concerts. So any highlights for you this year that are maybe a little different or things that are memorable?
Yeah, this year, third grade did something different. They did kind of a mini musical, which was really cool. So the kids, every kid who wanted a special part was able to have like something special, whether it was a talking part or being part of the kazoo choir, that was the highlight for many. I had no idea what I was getting myself into. I've never tried to put on any sort of like talking production. It was way more than I thought it was going to be. But to see it come together and have them all know where to go, that was just amazing. I think that was probably one highlight. And then the kindergarteners this year, I really, the stories coming out of Prizzle at the beginning of the year was like, you've got to watch out for these kids. And they have turned out to be just the most delightful group of humans. And they stood on risers that were delivered that morning from the middle school for nine songs, in mostly one spot the whole time, which, if you know five-year-olds these days, is a testament. So, yeah, it was a really great show, really great concert series this year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone we mentioned. Thank you to all the people that had suggested recognition. Much appreciated. A lot of great things happening in the district, so stay tuned for more recognition to come next month. But in the meantime, I'm turning it over to our Student Board of Education Representative, Parker Wagner, to give us some updates on high school activities.
This week's classes were a little bit different. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday have all been altered to facilitate finals. So for periods one and two, they were on Tuesday. Four, five, and six were today, and then the last two will be taken tomorrow. The layout of this week was specifically designed to ease students by giving them breaks and time to study for specific classes in between these large tests. It's a stressful week, but actions like this make it much easier to focus and do our best. Both boys and girls basketball has had an unfortunate week with some losses, but hopefully that can change when the boys play Marshfield on Friday. Hockey has been doing well. The East Merrill United Blue Jacks had a few great games under this last weekend, a notable one being their game against Metford, which ended 12-0, which is a very good score for hockey. And Winterfest signup has occurred. Winterfest is going to be on the 30th, and it provides a day full of activities for students to have fun and enjoy time in the company of their friends. The staff have really listened to students and incorporated activities the students love to participate in. Some of the more popular choices are Church to the Mall of America and Granite Peak. There's a cookout with the math teachers and many different types of sports tournaments. I'm going bowling and then to the Humane Society to make toys and treats. So there's a bunch of great options that the staff have sent out questions, like asking what the students want to do, and they've done a good job incorporating that stuff.
I know, I'm excited for that. I'm going to Clay Corner with my friends, and I'm very excited. This Monday, rehearsals for the Spring Musical, Catch Me If You Can, began. Students auditioned last week, and this week brings the start to a few months of hard work and talent from everyone involved. We're all looking forward to the finished production in late March or early April. Starting this month, we will be getting ready to register for classes for next year's school year. Students should be thinking about what classes they want to take and how many credits they have left. Students will be getting a new update to Flex Time Manager, which is where we sign up for a third period. In the past, it was up to students and teachers to be signed up for what class they need the most help in. Starting soon, students with a D or an F in a class will be automatically assigned to that teacher. Students who have all As, Bs, and Cs will have the option to sign up for the large group areas, such as the library or the commons, and won't be automatically assigned to a teacher unless they request it. This will be determining what, this will make determining what class we need the most help in much easier for everyone involved, even the teachers.
Thank you, Max. Parker, any board members have any questions? It's pretty thorough, but anything you'd like to ask them? Usually like to razz Max, but we'll give him a little bit of a reprieve this month. But thank you both for giving us updates on what's going on at Merrill High School. Next on our agenda, we have administrative reports. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Murray to highlight those this evening.
First item on administrative reports is the Pine River School of Young Learners monthly report, whose enrollment numbers, some information from the Office of Head Start, et cetera. If there's any questions, Mr. Murray tends to here to answer those. Item E is the Food Service Report. That's a monthly report prepared by Laura Crosey, has participation information and board bits. If you happen to check our participation report for this year, there's some information regarding our fund balance for the food service account, so we're going to have to have that discussion here in the near future, Mark and I, for example, the board regarding the impact of the free breakfast on the fund balance, the sustainability of that, et cetera. So more to come on that, but you can see the data on that. Item C, Director of People's Services Special Ed Report. Some topics there include some nonbalance crisis intervention information, some schools, and number of students here this evening. Any questions for? Item D is the Director of Critical Instruction Report with Act 20 updates. We are at full swing on Act 20, and our staff, Amanda Patterson, are working very, very hard to make that effective for us. And so she, she's not here this evening, but I can forward on any questions if there are. Item E is the Technology Report. Andrew Kahler is here this evening. His report includes some information on the backup deployment and the buyback for staff. Tech Director's meeting that he's in, attending, some building ticket updates for the month of November. Any questions for? Item M is the Director of Finance Report. Information there about transportation bids, audits, Applied Labs. Applied Labs is the census of enrollment projections looking forward, so we'd be engaged with that organization as that service hasn't expired this year. And so we'll be presenting some information on enrollment projections looking forward once that is obtained from now. Mark's here, if you have any questions for. Item G, Director of Human Resources Report includes a lot of fun stuff like FMLA and ACA and OSHA requirements and all those kinds of things. We did have a retiring meeting last week. There's some information about educator rising changes in the student handbooks, et cetera. Heather's here this evening, if we have questions for. Saying none. Item H is the Director of Living in the Grounds Transportation Update, focusing mostly on current and future projects. That report is attached and make this here if you have questions for. And Item I is the Superintendent's Report. Some information there about updates to the strategic planning process, which we'll discuss later on in the agenda. Some budget forecasting that we've begun with Mark and Heather and other departments will be starting soon. Busing Proposals is also coming up later in the agenda. That was presented to HR Finance last, last week. Some paragraph about the state convention that a number of us are going to with Kevin. Next week, the State Education Convention is Tuesday through Friday of next week, and some number of us are going to that. And then both Mark's report and mine, I mentioned Debbie Spring, retired from the Business Services Office here, unless she served a long time for our district. I put it in mind because it's part of the deal was bringing back the Director of HR. We had agreed to absorb the position that came available, so that has stayed in place. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and anything from my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Just a reminder, you know, going off of your mention of the State Education Convention, I have heard from a few board members, I am our delegate, the delegate assembly. So if anyone has any last minute updates or things that they have suggestions on, by all means email me or message me, and we will get that handled accordingly. Next on our agenda, I'll move to the committee reports. We'll start with the Facilities Committee. Draft minutes were provided from the January 8th, 2025 committee meeting. Myself as chair, and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for questions from the board. Any board members have questions for our Facilities Committee members? Questions for Facilities Committee? Why, as we will head to the Finance Human Resources Committee, the draft minutes were provided from the January 8th, 2025 committee meeting. John Smith as chair, and other members of the Finance Human Resources Committee are available for board member questions. Any clarifying questions from board members, the Finance Human Resources Committee? All right, next would be the CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, and Pupil Services Committee. The draft minutes were provided from that January 8th, 2025 committee meeting. Ron Liberty and members of that committee are available for questions from board members. Board members have any questions for our CTP committee members this evening? Hearing done, we'll move on. We have nothing currently listed as unfinished business. I think that may change for next month because we're starting on this month's agenda. First item is the Fiscal Year 24 Annual Financial Audit. Unfortunately, prior to today and talking to Sharon and Mark, we did not get all the information from the audit to have that as a topic tonight, so I would look for a board member willingness to motion to table. Brett?
Motion to table Fiscal Year 24 Annual Financial Audit. Information available.
Motion by Brett. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. 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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. We'll table that topic as instructed in the motion. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Transportation Waiver. Topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. There's a recommended motion from our Prizzle Policy Council. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Nubs?
I recommend the approval of the Head Start Transportation Waiver for 2025-2026 school year.
Motion by Nubs.
A second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this agenda item or this motion? Any discussion, questions on this agenda item or motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. 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 Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Open Enrollment Spaces Available on MAPS. 2011 Wisconsin Act 114 discussion and 2015 Act 55, open enrollment for pupils with disabilities. The topic summary sheet was provided by Amber Haluska, and there is a recommended motion from our CTP committee members. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Ron?
Motion to approve the classroom capacity for open enrollment purposes and to not deny students with disability based on space for the 2025-2026 open enrollment period.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or agenda item? Discussion or questions on this motion or agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Transportation Contract Proposals. Topic summary sheet was provided by Mark Paul. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic or agenda item? John?
Motion to recommend to select Colvinson buses as the new contractor starting for the 25-26 school year.
Motion by John. A second by Mike. Mark and Shannon, any, Shannon, you want to highlight the process?
Sure.
Get any questions answered by Mark as well, or you add on.
Yeah, as we shared with HR Finance Committee earlier than I was at that meeting, we had a pretty in-depth process to select Colvinson. We sent out, Mark sent out requests for proposals around the state. We got back four bids back from different vendors for students, labors, Colvinson. Saw their financial proposals and then invited each of them. And so the committee made up of about 10 of us. Set it on the interviews with each of the blessing companies, then Mark and I and Chris Hahn on the activity side. Called different people that we knew around the state for reference checks on these. And the committee unanimously selected Colvinson based on reputation, service, their vision for operations in our community. And so if approved, then the next step is we will be developing the negotiations of the contract. And we would take that contract back to the board. Is that covered on Mark?
Yes.
All right, with that, that lead in and that start of the discussion period, any board members have any discussion or questions on this motion or the topic? Go ahead, Ron.
Did I hear you right that you said they use propane car buses? Is that right?
That's in their proposals, yes.
Propane buses.
There's a couple of districts, like Lowdy, for example, is all propane. So that's just part of the discussion.
Clean energy.
Chief R. Two.
Chief R. Two, forty-two. Thank you.
Yes. One other thing to mention, and maybe I'm wrong, and you guys can clarify this, but last year at the education convention, not everyone, not every district is getting bids, and we got four. I mean, we did have choices.
I know Rhinelander, two years ago, I think sent out a bid and maybe didn't receive any. I think they bid it out again this year, maybe, but I don't know what the status of it is. But Wassa went out this year, earlier in the year. I don't know how many bids they had. I didn't talk to them. They retained first student, which is, you know, they have Depot there, just like the, and Labor's does too. So I don't know what the interest was, but a little surprised we got four. But just kind of where we are, you know, it's not real conducive, which is part of probably Rhinelander as well. A lot of the smaller, you know, kind of like Quinor, they're getting out of the business. So probably going to be a lot of shifts in the state.
Sure. All right. Thank you for that clarification and discussion. Any other board members have discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none. Let's vote on that. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the 2025-2027 Administrator and Superintendent Contracts. Topic summary sheet was provided by Heather Solberg. Our Finance Human Resources Committee has a recommended motion. Anyone willing to motion on this agenda item? Ron?
Motion to approve the 2025-2027 Administrator Contract and 2025-27 Superintendent Contract as presented.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Strategic Planning Phase One. There is an administrative recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Nubs?
I'm also approve the Phase One Strategic Planning Process document as presented or as modified.
We have a motion by Nubs. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. As we get into the discussion and question phase, I'd ask Shannon to highlight that. But I'm going to ask Amber, also sharing some of her experiences there. So Shannon?
So in November of this year, the board approved us engaging with Joe Schrader Consulting to help facilitate our long-range strategic planning process for the next several years. Per Joe's recommendation, we put together a team of 23 different people, staff administrators, Amber as a board representative, we had a student, a parent, a community member, community members. It was a, it was a pretty good cross-section of people. Joe led us through a day and a morning worth of activities to kind of get us to a place. So the first phase was to revisit our mission, mission statement and our vision to help guide the future phases in the work and then to establish some collective commitments as a group for what we represent, what we believe in. These are attached there in those documents. And then finally to, to define the four pillars of the strategic planning areas that we will focus on that. If approved, then we know how to proceed, and Joe knows how to proceed with Phase Two as far as coming up with strategic objectives and action steps in each of those pillars based on the work that we've done so far.
I think it was just really good discussion. I mean, it was really thought out. There was a lot of open discussion, a lot of feedback given to each other. I think they worked really good as a group to really come down to those specific things and what was important to all.
I think everybody had a voice.
Yeah, 100%.
I think even the students were really heard, which I absolutely appreciate. And I think Joe did a great job doing it along and doing it well.
I was unable to attend the entire process. I did stop in to welcome and thank everyone to, for being a part of that. The thing that impressed me right off the bat is he set, he set the tone. I mean, this isn't perhaps what you've been through before. This isn't this monotonous process. This isn't, you know, give, give me your attention, give me your clear mind, give us, you know, you know, your devotion to the district, carry it over to this process. And everyone was, was doing that. So it was, like I said, he set that. All the things going through my mind and some other processes and other businesses where I had been part of strategic planning, he set the expectations from the beginning and just let you know that this, this isn't going to be the same old same old. This is going to be a group actually discussing this and we're not throwing this down your throat, so to speak. It's, we're going to collaborate and come up with some, some good things here. So. He set the tone very well and everything I've heard from people I've talked to, the process went well and good work products. Thank you to everyone who's done that.
So if you look at the slot analysis, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, that will be the kind of the general themes in each of those pillars that we'll do this for. And that came on a pretty comprehensive process that we do a lot of sticky notes and groupings of stuff and those kind of things. And so we looked at, you know, in advance, we shared with Joe, surveyed the test scores, financial information, all these things in advance that everyone had, and then that's what ended us in these places. Have approved, well, we're meeting again on the 4th of March. Sorry, I'm not sure what happens if it's approved or not between now and then, but we're meeting again on the 4th.
Good.
So currently you operate under, I believe, SAIL. SAIL is part of your internal, which is kind of like an internal strategic plan.
Yeah, SAIL will be the academic building.
Okay. And so then there's some way to interface SAIL, which is internally operating versus the strategic plan, which sounds like as external community, basically something that makes it mesh together.
Yeah, so we had some pretty lengthy discussion on those days regarding that. So SAIL will, our SAIL work will slot really nicely to that academic pillar. The strategic objectives and those kind of things will drive that SAIL work. And we expect to do similar things in the other pillars regarding some of the hundred day plans and checks and monitors. So we think we will keep the spirit up of what we're doing in SAIL and each of those pillars to keep those things fresh and important.
Any other questions or discussion? Brett?
If you don't have an answer for this, finance, I'm just curious if you have an insight of where, so like the, you know, weakness of student leaving, student level of feeling respected and sense of belonging, of where that kind of came out of or what the discussion was around that?
Yeah, so that came out of our most recent student surveys last year. And so pretty much across the board, I think it increased as students got older, but that was feedback from student service. Respected, Amber, do you recall? It feels like respected by peers.
Yeah, there was a couple of different parts within that survey that we tried to kind of put together in some of those topics that kind of would be.
So maybe in respected from staff, it might be more from like inter-grade level respect?
I would say we kind of did the whole, kind of like the school part of it.
How we treat each other.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Any additional discussion or questions in regard to the motion or this topic on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. We do have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Incredible Bank Donation for Washington Lighted Schoolhouse. Donation form and cover memo sheet was provided by Lisa Hoss. Due to the fact that the donation is over the $2,500 limit set policy, 7230, the donation comes to the board separately for approval versus being put in consent agenda. There is a recommended motion. If someone is willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Nubs?
I'm also approve the donation of funds of our Lisa, Lucy, Lee, and Eric Lee valued at $2,500 for using as needed at the school forest.
We'll hold that, though. We're going to go to that in a moment. We're on the Lighted Schoolhouse on the agenda above that. That's all right.
Okay, I move to go to donation of funds from Incredible Bank valued at $3,000 for Washington Lighted Schoolhouse materials and student activities.
Thank you. Now, do we have a motion? Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions in regards to that motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Laura Lucia Lee and Eric Lee donation for the school forest. Attached was a donation form and a cover memo from Russ Nolan. Same policy, 7230 applied. It's over that $2,500 limit. So it's coming to the board separately instead of being placed in consent agenda. There is a recommended motion. Any board members willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Amber?
A motion to approve the donation of funds by Laura Lucia Lee and Eric Lee valued at $2,500 per use as needed at the school forest.
Motion by Amber. Do we have a second? Second by Mike. Any discussion or questions in regards to the motion or this agenda item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is the Lincoln County ARC Risto Fund Donation for Special Olympics. Attached was a donation form and a cover sheet from Emily Heckendorf. Policy 7230 was utilized here again since that $2,500 limit was exceeded. There is a recommended motion on this topic. If someone is willing to make a motion. Amber?
A motion to approve the donation of funds from Lincoln County ARC Risto Fund valued at $3,000 for Special Olympics.
Motion by Amber. A second by Brett. Any discussion or questions in regards to this motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Certainly would like to, to thank Incredible Bank, Laura Lucia Lee and Eric Lee, as well as the Lincoln County ARC Risto Fund for donations we just approved. It's all much appreciated. Next, we have our consent agenda. Any board members like anything pulled from our consent agenda to be handled individually this evening?
Can I make a note real quick? That personnel report, Heather brought to my attention that some, in some of the agenda notes packets, it showed a median years of service as seven with a question mark, and that had been updated with nine years. So that's the only difference. It's on the personnel report that some people might not have seen that, that change. Some of, some of the packets I noticed had the nine years and some had the seven with the question mark. So I, I just want to make sure that it's clear it's nine, it's nine years.
All right.
It doesn't change anything, but just want, if anyone noticed that difference, that's what it was.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that and making sure that was in there correctly. And brought to our attention Tammy and Heather. I would look for a consent agenda motion. And Ron?
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which include minutes of December 18th, 2024, January 7th, 2025 meetings. Plans, vouchers, and receipts total in $2,980,422.59. Donations total in $15,634. And the attached personnel report, contingent upon release of contract for hiring, upon satisfaction of appropriated liquidated damages, resignations if adequate.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions?
Stay from December 18th meeting minutes. Most stay from January 7th meeting.
Right. Motion carries with the noted abstentions. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. Purpose of this agenda item is just to identify any items that either we've been working on and need to revisit per the board's wishes, or anything new around the horizon that we'd like to mention. Certainly can discuss that here and go through that as well as bring it to the attention of committee chairs or myself or Shannon for future meetings. We will open the floor. Any board members have any information or items for future meetings? Hearing none. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning, there is the regular. Just a reminder that tomorrow morning, there is the regular Thursday radio program with Blue Jay 730 radio station approximately 8:15 a.m. tomorrow morning. Shannon and I will be talking with Ronnie, the radio station in regards to tonight's meeting and anything going on in the district tied to tonight's meeting. Future meetings, I'd just like to remind everyone of our Vigesis Virtual Academy Governance Board Meeting on Thursday, January 30th. It's at 12:45 p.m. It's all virtually. We have a Head Start Policy Council meeting on Tuesday, February 11th, 5:30 p.m. at Pine River School for Young Learners. On February 12th, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom, CTP or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee next meeting, that is Wednesday, followed immediately by our Finance HR Committee meeting on that Wednesday, February 12th, no sooner than 5 p.m. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting slated for Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. That is our agenda for this evening. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nubs. Second by Mike. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at 6:21 p.m. signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all for your attendance. We'll be able to let you see.